So it was seven, right?
Huh?
You ten said about six.
Oh, I did. I appreciate it. I mean, last time I came on up here at five. And I don't think you had anything in tow.
Seven.
Yeah, Mr. Dean and Mary Paul.
Now, London said, hey, she had her knee surgery.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she's talking about coming back on Monday. She had it like Tuesday.
Well, I can tell you, London, she tried.
Oh, that's what she said. She was like, yeah, she talked to Jenny too, like, I am trying to come down on Monday.
I can prop it up and I can tell y'all what to do.
But, uh, so I guess she's got all of London on Tuesday. But she's, yeah, that's what we're doing. Yeah, Ernie was supposed to be there with her at least for the first week.
Ellis, I'm gonna mute the mics for right until seven o'clock, okay?
She decided to have it before Wednesday.
Well, then, that's, so that's hopefully.
We live anywhere, we know we're up in home.
Yeah.
We live anywhere near.
He's doing his own thing.
Mr. Kersey, can you hear us?
I know how to, I know how to get, I know where Peach Grove is, 'cause the guy I play music with lives right before we get into the suburbs. But I got you.
Mr. Kersey, can you hear us?
I don't get a sign over that phone. And I hate to drive all the way over there.
Have you heard from Ellis, Jim?
I don't know very exactly.
You don't?
I got that.
I'm pretty sure, um, where the fire truck crash happened on Peach Grove. She lives, he's like four or five houses on the right side of that.
Is she in this wall or that's something?
I don't know if they are. They're just passing.
There's only way.
Did you talk to him?
I talked to him. He's coming from Dodge Way.
Sure he is. Twenty-five sixty-two Peach Grove Road.
Doing his usual perp side. Needing drugs.
I just, no, this is a town.
I'm gonna wait a few minutes.
Z, can you hear us?
Five sixty-two Peach Grove Road. I gotta come up here Tuesday for a meeting. I'll go right over there and get them.
Yeah, so I mean, just to, I live, we live right up there.
Where is twenty-five? Oh, all the way down.
Yeah, see, she's on that, like, maintenance route.
I have them, but I don't know if you can hear us.
See Scott McCoy, we've got the, uh, our launch down here.
I know Ellis can hear us.
I think, 'cause you know that one, that's the end of the state maintenance. Over there, Scott McCoy. But I think Scott McCoy is, it goes back, it goes all the way to this road and then it goes back now. But I mean, I can go by her. If I can get them.
She, she said it, uh... In the next week or something. She said she put them in. Oh, she left me.
I know, I like to get out two minutes early.
Did that save me a trip all the way over there.
Yeah, I mean, I can go get them.
Appreciate it.
I'll get them, well, maybe tonight or tomorrow morning.
When I, if you just, I gotta come up here for a meeting Tuesday.
I'll, I'll have them all.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Kersey, can you hear us?
Yes.
We can hear you. Uh, do you want me, you're logged, oh, you're logged in, excellent. All right, um, we are, uh, we're just, uh, waiting for everybody to assemble and we'll start shortly.
He's, he's gonna give me a heart attack with this one. Thank you so much. Put that down in the book. Put that down in the book.
She said, I missed that. Lordy, Lordy, Lord. Just trying to remember what my password is again.
Quite the sense of urgency that you look for, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Change the money. I gotta change. Change.
Since you're tardy. Since you're tardy.
Give me one time, you know.
All depends.
Pretty much, yeah.
I wasn't here.
Yeah.
And you should call me again when you have the safety.
Yeah.
All right, all right, very good. All right, I'd like to call the, uh, August meeting of the Weasack County Planning Commission to Order. Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barlow?
Yeah.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Painting?
Here.
Mr. Disisway?
Here.
Mr. Dickerson? Mr. Quarles?
I'm here, remote.
Mr. Goodwin?
Here.
Mr. Kersey?
Here, remote.
Mr. Perso?
Here.
Very good. Um, Mr. Quarles and Mr. Kersey, we'll start with Mr. Quarles. Can you, uh, state, uh, where you are and why you're unable to be here?
Well, I'm, um, I'm out of town on business in Connecticut, um, and I'm unable to be there at this time, uh, in person, but I'm here by remote.
Very good. And Mr. Kersey, can you state, uh, where you are and why you're not here?
I'm on vacation in Atlantic Beach, North Carolina. I've been here for the week.
Thank you. Very good. So, uh, please stand while we have the invocation led by Commissioner Goodwin, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Painting.
Stand if you are able. Lord, we thank you for this day. We know that no day is promised to us and every day is a blessing. And we give you sincere thanks for that blessing. As we gather here tonight to see to the business of the county and its citizens, we ask that you will grant us wisdom and civility. We ask this in the Savior's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well, we will move on to approval of the agenda. The agenda is before you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goodwin.
I'd like to insert a closed session into the agenda between the approval of the minutes of the July meeting and the consent agenda for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel.
I understand you'd like to amend the motion to approve the agenda by inserting a closed session between the minutes approval and consent agenda. Does the, uh, original motioner agree with that?
Yes, sir.
How about the seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Getting it right here. Uh, very good. All right, any other discussion on the agenda? All, uh, Ms. Johnson, a roll call vote on approving the agenda?
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Painting?
Yes.
Mr. Disisway?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Very good. The agenda is approved, uh, as amended. Next item is approval of the planning commission minutes of the July meeting that appear, uh, from pages two through nine in your packet. Do I have a, a motion to approve the minutes of the July meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any comments on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, Mr. Painting.
Having not been present, um, for the July meeting, I will be abstaining.
I understand you'll be abstaining since you were not present for the July meeting. Any further comments? Uh, I have one question. Uh, there was a discussion on the, uh, CUP twenty twenty-five dash zero six, that particular cell tower that had to do with, uh, what was going to be done with the old tower and when it was going to be removed. Uh, we probably should have, uh, some notation that that discussion took place. All right, in, any other comments for the minutes? Very well, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Painting?
Yes.
Oh, that's, uh, abstaining. Thank you.
Mr. Disisway?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Very well, the minutes of the July meeting are approved. Mr. Goodwin, did you have a motion to make at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, go into executive session, um, for the purpose of legal consultation.
Can you define that with Virginia Code section?
Oh. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
I move that we convene in a closed session pursuant to the following subsections of the Virginia Code. Paragraph two point two dash three seven one one. Paragraph one. In accordance with two point two dash three seven one one, A eight, consultation with legal counsel employed, retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Very well, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Painting?
Yes.
Mr. Disisway?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Very well, we're gonna go into closed session now.
If you would like to call a member of the commission, um, then we can get you into the room.
Yeah. All right, I think I'm off. Bye.
I'm standing. We're just thinking.
That's okay. I don't, I probably won't.
Here's the name.
Of course.
This costs, we can sleep for.
They'll reject you.
That's something, that's something.
I got one you can have, one you don't.
We're good.
We are good, very well.
I will now pull members to certify to the best of your knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened were discussed and considered by the Board. If any member believes the Board varied from the purpose stated for the closed meeting, please state so and the reason prior to casting a vote. So do you certify that to the best of each member's knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under this chapter, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body? Ms. Johnson will ask for roll call vote recognizing that yes is in agreement, no is not, and if you vote no, you should state the reason why you're voting no prior to casting your vote. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Borla?
Not a member, but yes.
I wasn't sure if he was participating. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Painting?
Yes.
Mr. Disasway?
Yes.
Mr. Quarles?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We don't have a consent agenda tonight, so we're going to move directly to the public address. Public address period is a time in which anybody in the room can address the planning commission on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. There's not a public hearing on the agenda tonight. So I'm going to open the public address period. Would you, if you come forward, would you please state your name and voting district? You'll have three minutes to speak. Let me know if you represent an organization. You'll have five minutes if you do. Public address period is open. Would anyone like to come forward to speak on an item that is not a public hearing tonight? Very well, seeing none, I'm going to close public address period. Public address period is closed. Next item is unfinished business. And Mr. Coon, I believe the unfinished business we have right now to discuss briefly is the comprehensive plan, where we are in the update process.
Yes, sir, Chairman, Members of Planning Commission. We have worked through public survey. We've actually met with Commissioner Goodwin and Commissioner Dickerson about some of those questions. We also met with the Board of Supervisors reps, and we are working through some directors as well to see if there's any questions that they would like added, depending on this public safety, schools, a couple other facilities and items that were added in there. So we're looking to finalize that here very shortly and get it out so we can start the town halls. The Board actually approved a contract with the TJPDC for assistance, offering up to 160 hours of assistance for those town hall meetings, as well as just some technical assistance with answering questions at those town halls.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Coon. All right. Next up then is public hearings. First public hearing is proposed amendments, Chapter 86, Land Development Regulations. What I'd like to say to begin with, before we go directly to the staff report on this, because we had some confusion last month with the information in the packet, I requested that this month the packet include three items. And I want to clarify this, make sure that we're all on the same page here with the commission. And for those of you in the audience who have pulled this and are reading this, to help you understand what it is we're going to be looking at and what is the final thing we'll be voting on tonight. So in packet pages 13 through 18, we have what is the original language that was voted out of the work session from the June meeting of the Planning Commission. On pages 19 through 24 is a red line markup of that product that the work session produced, and this red line markup is following legal review. And on packet pages 26 through 31 is a clean copy of that red line markup. So if you want to see the changes that were made, look at the red line markup, but the Planning Commission is considering the text on pages 26 through 31, the final clean version. So that should help in working through what's in the packet. A little bit different than what we do, but I ask that it be done this way so we have clarity in all of the information. So I'll just leave that at that. Mr. Coon, I'll turn it over to you for your presentation.
Thank you, Chairman, Members of Planning Commission. So if you check on packet page 10, you will see my memo to the Planning Commission. Just go through it relatively quickly, and you can ask any questions. So the background of this is that since 2019, the county has required a CUP for emergency shelters. That definition was defined as facilities providing temporary housing for homeless individuals. Prior to the definition, it lacked detail. It led to ambiguity of a lot of questions that have happened over the past two years with some organizations that were interested in providing this type of service. That ambiguity was not just to the applicants, but as well as to staff and some of the planning commissioners, which led to basically confusion, which when we started having discussions on this, Planning Commission and two members in particular felt that we needed to go into more depth to help clarify a lot of the items that are being discussed here today. So the proposed update replaces emergency shelter with the definition of humanitarian shelter. And what it does is two different things. One is it says the facility that provides a temporary shelter and basic services. So it expands the services that can be provided, as well as instead of only to individuals, it allows to individuals or families. So it expands those individuals that can benefit from this service. And then we just finalized it without requiring leases or occupancy agreements, because this is a temporary basis. It also establishes a uniform minimum CUP submission requirements. It does seem daunting, but a lot of this information is things that if someone were to file a CUP, that staff would request prior to having a neighborhood meeting or the application actually come to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission reps, as well as staff, felt that it was beneficial to put it all in an ordinance so that it was established, and these minimums were there for everyone to see when they started the initial process. This process is intended to be equitable, and it's required from everyone. So whether it's faith-based organizations, nonprofits, or private operators, they all would have to do the same CUP process. In Louisa County, we actually have religious assemblies, and nonprofits do not pay for planning and zoning fees. It's an exemption that is in our fee schedule, and what that does is that means that religious organizations and nonprofits do not have to pay for the CUP. They do not have to pay for the public hearing notice, which goes to the paper, and they do not have to pay for the adjoining property owners or those certified letters. The whole CUP process typically takes 90 to 120 days from the first contact to the final meeting at the Board. A lot of times with businesses, it's more complex than this, so I would say this would be a quicker process than some of the other ones that we've seen. And what that process does is it allows for public notice, it allows for transparency, it lets the neighbors be informed of what could be occurring, and allows them an opportunity for input. And as well as it gives the decision-making considers the mission of the shelter, as well as the context of the surrounding area. And the CUP process is not intended to hinder efforts, but to balance the applicant's mission and property rights, the rights of the neighbors and the community interests, and then as well as the county's responsibility to orderly land use planning. It really boils down to the two changes that have happened, is that the 2019 version did not allow for families, it only allowed for individuals to be serviced by this use, as well as there's no standards that were provided that gave anybody clear guidelines and a path forward to get this process done. So with this amendment, it really updates the definition, provides additional individuals that could be served, as well expanding where they could be located, because we're taking it from a few zoning districts to all zoning districts but RD. So just about any parcel in the county would be able to file a CUP for this use. And honestly, and this is staff's opinion and mine personally, that the benefits of this update is that there's clear expectations for applicants, staff, Planning Commission, and the Board. It improves transparency in the review process, so everybody knows what to expect and what is happening. And it provides community awareness so that individuals can provide input when a use like this is being proposed near their homes. And then it balances the humanitarian goals with the neighborhood compatibility. In my closing message, this ordinance is to clarify, be fair, and encourage community engagement. Since 2019, the CUP process for the shelters has ensured that any shelter, whether operated by a church, a nonprofit, or a private group, is reviewed to respect the mission of the operators, protect the neighborhood interests, and uphold the county's commitment to land use planning. The proposed amendment does not impose new restrictions. It actually expands the definition of service, allowed in more zoning districts, and by broadening the opportunity for NGOs to legally offer shelter, it also establishes the clear standards, equitable treatment, and then provides community awareness, which ultimately enhances the ability to provide this service. And I stand ready to answer any questions.
I do, would like to start by saying that the Planning Commission received a letter from the Rutherford Institute this afternoon, and I'd like to find out, his staff had a chance to review that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll answer that question. Staff did have an opportunity to review it, as did I, and after the review, I saw no legal issues with what is being proposed by staff this evening.
Very well, thank you. Do, are there any?
Oh, certainly. I'll repeat that. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Yes, I just said that I did review the letter that was received. The staff reviewed, and I reviewed the letter as well, and I did not find any legal issues with what staff is proposing tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the, for the staff from the commission before we go to public comment? Very well, thank you, Mr. Coon. We're going to open the public comment period on this. Public comment period is open. We typically start with the applicant for the public comment period, since this is an ordinance change, and the county is essentially the applicant. We've had the presentation for that already. I have a number of cards in front of me, going to call your name and give a heads-up for the next person or two in line, so that we can move through the process. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please let me know if you represent an organization. If you represent an organization, you'll have five minutes to speak, so that's important. And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and your voting district. If you're not in Louisa, just say you're not a Louisa resident, and that's fine. We start with Louisa residents, and then we move to the non-residents. We have a number of speakers, but they're not too many tonight. We have plenty of time to take care of everyone. So first up is Sue Frankel Street, followed by Lynn Kogle.
Hello, my name's Sue Frankel Straight. I'm in the Patrick Henry voting district. Well, after reading the updated language in the final code presentation, I guess I'm here to once again ask that you all not insist that churches or anyone else offering temporary shelter to our unhoused community apply for a CUP. Why should the county regulate who stays overnight in a local church or anywhere else? I don't think the county regulates AA meetings, or bingo nights, or even youth lock-ins. And why should a church or anywhere else have to prove to the county that they're connected to social services just to provide overnight shelter? These churches aren't offering to be a wraparound service for folks for free, and nor should they have to. They're carrying out faith mandates to take care of the needy. And it's not the county's job, really, I don't think, to determine how they do it. And in fact, I think it's actually unfair that in addition to us providing shelter, since the county's not doing it, there's also the expectation that we be or find social workers for people before we get permission to house them. Because if we're not housing them, they also don't have wraparound services. And then they're also cold and hungry. So it just doesn't make any sense to me that we have all of these hoops to jump through to make one part of people's lives easier. In addition, there's a request to provide an impact statement that includes how we are, quote, "trying to minimize impact on county services and neighboring properties." What does that really mean? And is that equitable to the people who are unhoused? I heard a commission member express in some of these earlier meetings that he doesn't want to see people transported from the shelter using the jaunt bus. Why not? Aren't these community members welcome to use these community services? And is it the purpose of the jaunt bus, the sole purpose, to provide transportation to community members who don't otherwise have it? Our unhoused residents are actually the people that the jaunt bus, I believe, is for. They need the jaunt bus. I also heard that there was an official who wanted to know what we're doing about showers and daytime space for people who spend the night at a church. Well, what's being done for them when they're not spending the night at a church? We may not have all the answers, although honestly, we have thought this through in a very detailed fashion, and we do have a lot of answers. It just seems ludicrous that we should have to provide them to the county, when if we don't do this, no one is being held accountable for the fact that people are freezing. I'd really like to see the Planning Commission institute some code around not offering shelter. As a Louisa resident, I think the Board of Supervisors should have to apply for a conditional use permit to leave its heated buildings empty at night while its unhoused community members freeze. I'd like to see an impact statement around that.
Yes.
The county didn't open any emergency shelter for, not even one night last winter.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you. Please let us provide shelter.
Next up is Lynn Kogle, followed by the Reverend David McWilliams.
I'm Lynn Kogle, and I'm from the Mineral District. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I do appreciate the work that you've done regarding humanitarian shelters. It is definitely a better definition, so good step in the right direction. What I'm here to talk about tonight is the stigma around homelessness and why these shelters are so important to our residents. First, HUD defines homelessness as lacking a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. Some of the obstacles that may lead people to experience homelessness include experiencing homelessness as a child or a teen, a lack of affordable housing for people with low to very low income, as you know, a big problem here, job loss, or death of the household breadwinner, or one large unexpected expense like a medical crisis, which makes it difficult for people to maintain independent housing. Do any of you know anyone who's homeless? I'm blessed, too. I don't know many, but I have met some very good people who need our help. Homelessness is a complex issue affecting people worldwide. It's misunderstood and stigmatized, leads to widespread misconceptions about the individuals experiencing it. Many people wonder, are homeless people dangerous? This question stems from fear and misunderstanding rather than factual evidence. The reality is that most homeless individuals are not violent or dangerous. They're often victims of circumstances beyond their own control, factors such as job loss, mental illness, addiction, systemic failures that contribute to homelessness. Let's dispel some of the myths and foster some empathy. While suffering in plain sight and making many housed people feel uncomfortable, the vast majority of homeless people, including those with mental illness, aren't hurting anyone. In actuality, homeless folks are 13 times more likely to be the victim than the perpetrator of a crime. About 30% of homeless are families, others are young adults, veterans, and seniors. Research indicates that many homeless They're often victims of circumstances beyond their own control, factors such as job loss, mental illness, addiction, systemic failures that contribute to homelessness. Let's dispel some of the myths and foster some empathy. While suffering in plain sight and making many housed people feel uncomfortable, the vast majority of homeless people, including those with mental illness, aren't hurting anyone. In actuality, homeless folks are 13 times more likely to be the victim than the perpetrator of a crime. About 30% of homeless are families, others are young adults, veterans, and seniors. Research indicates that many homeless face criminalization for survival activities like sleeping in public spaces. It's crucial to differentiate between crime and desperation when discussing homelessness and safety. The truth remains clear: most homeless individuals are not dangerous, but rather face numerous challenges themselves. Let's help them in Luisa. Thanks for your efforts and for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Kogle. Next up is the Reverend David McDaniels, sorry, David McWilliams, my apologies, followed by Alicia Ford.
My name is David McWilliams, live in the Greenspring District and representing Zion United Methodist Church, also in the Greenspring District. Good evening. On several occasions over the last several months, I've been asked by members of the planning commission, by journalists from the media, by members of my own church, why it's such a big deal that a church would have to apply for a CUP in order to provide a shelter. Why not just apply for the CUP? And so before you take your vote, and I'm going to trust that you haven't already made up your mind as to how you're going to vote, I want to share one more time, as clearly as I can, why it is such a burden on the church to apply for a conditional use permit before fulfilling our mission. A conditional use permit places the authority of the church into the hands of the local government and the local community, rather than on the prayerful discernment of the church and its ordained leaders. And while scriptures like Romans 13 encourage Christians to submit themselves to every authority among humanity, the lived example of the church has always been civil disobedience to the leaders of the community when it conflicts with being obedient to Jesus. And so because I know that you are all political officials, and your responsibility is to understand the law, as a pastor of a church, my responsibility is to understand scripture. And so allow me to help you understand how we, as the church, come to understand this responsibility as vital, essential part of the ministry of the church, and not, as your proposal puts it, an ancillary use. The Bible begins with an affirmation that all humans are created in the image of God, which means that every single human being, no matter what desperate circumstances they find themselves in, is created in the image of a beautiful, loving God. So when God chooses to form a nation out of people, God doesn't choose a rich, powerful, thriving nation to claim as his own. God chooses those who are enslaved in Egypt and chooses to set them free as a way of proving that same purpose, that even those who are enslaved in Egypt are created in the image of God. As this people becomes a nation over time, they repeatedly forget the laws that God has set before them, laws in which they were to care for the poor, the marginalized and the least of these. And as a result, they are sent into exile, and prophets are repeatedly proclaiming to them that the reason that they have lost their status among men is because they have failed to provide for the least of these. Isaiah puts it this way, "What does the Lord require of us? To share your bread with the hungry and bring the homeless poor into your house." As Jesus begins his public ministry, he opens the scroll of Isaiah, enters into a portion of Isaiah, and begins to read, "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me to announce good news to the poor." This is how Jesus defines his ministry. And so it shouldn't be surprising that Jesus says, "Blessed are the poor, for yours is the kingdom of God." That when asked about how to become a follower, Jesus responds, "Go and sell everything you have and give it to the poor." When asked about the nature of God's kingdom, Jesus describes a feast in which every single person, but especially the poor, are invited to participate. When asked about how to love one's neighbor, Jesus tells a story of someone caring for the poor. Nor should it be surprising that Jesus' followers held all of their possessions in common, and the description of this in the Book of Acts is for the purpose that no one would be in need. As the church grows and spreads over time, caring for the physical needs of the poor was so central to Christianity that one biblical author wrote that to have faith without caring for the physical needs of the poor is to have a useless faith. To make it so that churches must apply for a permit, a permit that we are not guaranteed to receive, a permit that is subject to the approval of our neighbors, not feeling like we're putting a burden on them because we're doing our responsibility as Christians, is to suggest that what the community thinks is more important than what the church and its leaders discern that God is calling us to do, what God has been calling us to do since the very beginning of time. And so forgive me for not wanting to go through this extra step. Forgive me for knowing that some of my fellow churches are not going to apply.
Thank you, Reverend McWilliams. Next up is Alicia Ford, followed by Erin Rose.
Hello, my name is Alicia Ford, and I'm in the Luisa voting district, and also an active member of Mechanic Soul Baptist Church, one of the churches that is looking to provide a humanitarian shelter. I plan to speak to a primary concern that the local churches share regarding the conditional use permit, and my plea for exemption for the need to apply for one. I first want to briefly speak to why the crisis of homelessness is a cause for which I'll never stop advocating. I myself experienced homelessness firsthand from the age of 15 to 17. To sum up, my parents divorced, my mom tried to make ends meet and work 12-hour days. For a couple of years, it worked, until it didn't. We tried getting help from the county. She was offered a total of $13 per month in food stamps and nothing more. We ended up packing what would fit in our car and living there, leaving everything else behind. We'd stay sometimes in random parking lots, sometimes in rest areas. It was degrading and humiliating, and we told no one. The shame of washing my hair in a McDonald's bathroom so I could go to school and not raise questions was not exactly something we wanted to share with those who knew us. It was about a year later when a friend of school invited me, from school invited me to his church, and I began attending weekly. After a few months, the church found out that my mom and I were homeless. To say that they sprung into action would be an understatement. They helped us with shelter and whatever else we needed without hesitation, without judgment, and most importantly, without having to ask for permission. They knew then, as we do now, that God expects nothing less of them. My mom and I spent the next year rebuilding our lives. We are now both business owners in the town of Luisa. It was tough to rebuild, but I can confidently say that without the church being the church, our story would have had a very different and possibly even tragic ending. As for the concerns over the conditional use permit, I urge you to make the decision to exclude churches from this process. There are many concerns than the one that I'm going to focus on, but I will just leave it at the one. The cup approval status. The members of the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission change over time. Even if we could assume that the current members of these committees would be favorable towards churches receiving a cup, there is no guarantee that approval would remain over time. The outline process gives absolute authority to the local government over whether a church can live out its foundational purposes. And honestly, we're living in a society that doesn't always respect the rights or missions of the church. As Reverend David McWilliams mentioned, Jesus is Lord. Then the cup process, as I understand it, takes the authority of Christ as the head of the church and gives it to the government. The church is not a democratic institution. We singularly obey the teachings of Christ by the guidance of the Holy Spirit. To wait for permission of the government, to be obedient to Jesus, would betray the earliest Christian creed, Jesus is Lord.
Ms. Ford, your time is up.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Erin Rose, to be followed by Tina Marshall.
Good evening, I'm Erin Rose Jones. I live in the Greensprings District. I am a community doula, which means I provide emotional, informational, and advocacy support, mentorship, education, and connection to community resources to pregnant women and postpartum as well. I currently work with Dr. Denise Young at CVHS in Luisa on Thursdays when she sees her OB patients there. Many of her patients are very, they're Medicaid, they're low socioeconomic status, and as community doula, that also means I am of their community. I also live in Luisa County. I am a single mom of five. I have had my fair share of struggles making ends meet. I feel like I could end up on the street at any time if some little something goes wrong. Thankfully, we have a good place to live, but anything comes up, that would be it for us. So I feel a connection with the people I see there. Many of Dr. Young's patients living in Luisa County do face very difficult and unstable life circumstances, and recently, over this summer, we've had multiple patients who have been facing homelessness. We had one who was eight weeks pregnant, and another with a nine-month-old, and they were both homeless for several weeks about a month or two ago, and both of them were able to stay at the Loyalty Inn for a couple of weeks, thanks to funding by Luisa Homeless Coalition and local churches. That kind of thing gets very expensive very quickly, so we feel that there needs to be something besides funding extended hotel stays. We have another client who left a domestic violence situation with her baby, her two-month-old, and they both would have been homeless or going back to a very bad, dangerous situation, and she would have lost custody of her baby if she had. We were able, David McWilliams in particular, worked with me to be able to provide safe shelter, and we have gotten her on her feet, and she's really in a much better place now and working hard to get everything together and provide a safe life for herself and her baby. So these people are living here in Luisa County. They are in very vulnerable time, being mothers pregnant with little babies, and they're homeless. So just, they're humans, the same as you and me. They all have their own unique story. They're trying their best to get by, as best as they know how. So just want you to carry that experience.
Thank you. Next up is Tina Marshall, followed by, let's turn the page, Juanita Jo Matkins. Is Tina Marshall here? No? Very well, then we'll move on to Juanita Jo Matkins, and she'll be followed by Ellen's, I'm sorry, Eileen, let me put my glasses on, Eileen Smith.
My name is Juanita Jo Matkins. I live at 64 Yanceville Road. I'm in the Mountain Road Voting District, and I'm representing Yanceville Christian Church today. Yanceville Church is one of the churches who welcomed guests last winter as part of the work of the Luisa Homeless Coalition. Our experience was a uniformly positive experience. One of the best outcomes for us was the feeling that we were really doing what Jesus wants us to do, as clearly described in his words in Matthew, chapter 26, 25. I'm open to any questions you may have about our experiences last winter, but what I want to do tonight is tell you about the experience of another church that wanted to house the homeless. They wanted to provide a temporary home. We're only providing a warm bed overnight in our church for a week or two, per church. This story is true. It happened in the past two years, and it hasn't yet happened in Luisa. It's about the Church of the Rock in the city of Castle Rock, Colorado. You can Google it. The church was housing two families in two RVs on church property in the town. It was temporary housing with the intent of getting the families into permanent housing. The land was zoned commercial. The church was fined by the town for a zoning violation. The church appealed to the equivalent of our Board of Zoning Appeals, and the appeal was denied. The church filed an appeal in federal court. The judge in federal court ruled definitively that the law does not allow government to interfere with actions related to, quote, "sincerely held religious beliefs," unquote. This story could be used in Luisa. Ms. County Attorney could say to the judge, "This is going to be an easy case. Look at the Church of the Rock versus the town of Castle Rock." The case would probably not even be brought to court, since the outcome is so clear. What happened in Castle Rock? As of June 2025, the parties reached a settlement. The church can install up to seven campers or house-trailer-like vehicles. The town pays all outstanding fines and legal fees for the church, an amount of at least The town installs and funds any landscaping and buffering they recommend. Now I'm going to turn to the case itself. I found a very interesting quote, probably written by one of the judge's clerks, but nonetheless, the voice of the judge. "The town's position in this case, in fact, seems to be motivated not by animus, but by traditional NIMBY-ism related to RVs, portable toilets, and homeless individuals in an upscale neighborhood. The church's desire to develop a larger-scale, affordable housing operation on the property surely exacerbates these concerns, and may be part of a new effort to fight, not in my backyard-ism, with yes, in God's backyard-ism." I'll conclude, there are over 100 churches in Luisa. Unless the county wants our story to be similar to the Church of the Rock, it would be wise to find a way out of our dilemma without government attempting to regulate churches. Then we can all be parties to adhering to an authority much higher and greater than zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matkins. Next up is Eileen Smith, followed by Mary Cranz.
I'm Eileen Smith. I'm in the Cuckoo District, I understand. I'm sort of new to this game, but it would seem to me that what I've heard here tonight and what I've read about before is that the planning commission should be grateful that churches want to take on this responsibility, because the county isn't doing it, and do we really want people in our county to be? I know a few years ago, what was it, three years ago, maybe four years ago now, when it was so hot, the county came to our churches and said, "Would you please provide air conditioning and ice to people who are maybe not, don't have any to go to?" So it's kind of the same thing in reverse. The county came to us, to churches, to ask that several years ago, and now churches are saying, "We're willing to do this." You have a lot of churches that are willing to do this. It's taking a burden off the county, so why put a burden back on the churches to have to ask for this permission? It doesn't seem like it's worth it at all. Churches should be allowed to do what they are scheduled to do and what God wants them to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mary Cranz, followed by Dwayne Surgeon.
Mary Cranz, Mountain Road District.
Ma'am, do you need some water?
No, I just sound like a frog sometimes. Can you hear me? Is this better?
We can hear you fine. Yeah, just want to make sure you're comfortable.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work on this. And I know that your goal has been to create something that would please everyone, and I think that with some tweaks, you might be close. I've spoken about this with several of you, as well as several members of the Board of Supervisors, and what seems clear to me is that this need for a CUP arises primarily from fear of what might happen. So I'd like to make a comparison. Many churches hold outdoor revival events in the summertime. Many churches hold outdoor revival events in the summertime, and they are permitted as an accessory use of the property, as are a number of other things, but only up to a point. If attendance at these goes over 200 people, churches are required to obtain a C U P. So revivals are currently regulated because of this fear of what might happen. So what might happen? With a revival, it could attract many more people than the facility could handle, could disturb the neighbors, so forth. So there's a cap to prevent that from happening. With overnight sheltering, the fear is that too many people will take advantage of it, and they will come here from everywhere. But in reality, what churches want to do here is take care of a limited number of people who are already here. And so it comes down to a matter of scale. People don't want to find themselves living next to a homeless shelter, and I understand that. Few, though, would object if they found that the church they live next to is providing sleeping space a few nights out of the winter to members of our community. In the case of my church, the neighbors were delighted about it and brought so much food that we had too much. So how do we write that into zoning law? I think we do it the same way, put a numerical limit on it. For revivals, it's 200, just as in outdoor gatherings. I'm not suggesting 200 for humanitarian shelters, but I bet we could negotiate and we could come up with a reasonable number. My church set our own maximum at six, because that's all the space we have to set up cots. And if churches want to house people beyond that number that they are given, then the C U P process that you have carefully worked out would kick in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crans. Next up is Duane Surgeon, followed by James Amick.
Thank you for allowing us to have this time to speak. You all have received a letter from the Rutherford Institute today, as well as the County Board of Supervisors. Oh, by the way, I'm representing the Luisa Homeless Coalition, so, I'm sorry, I need my five minutes. So for the benefit of all those gathered here who didn't receive this letter, you've all should have it, and the public out there watching this meeting, I would like to read the letter. "To the Luisa County Planning Commission Board of Supervisors in Luisa, regarding proposed humanitarian shelter amendments, Chapter 86, Land Development Regulations of the Luisa County Code of Ordinances. Dear members of the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, in the coldest months of the year, when darkness falls early and the temperatures drop dangerously low, the difference between life and death for someone living on the streets can be as simple as a warm room and a safe place to sleep. For centuries, churches have answered this need out of a sacred call to serve the least of these. These acts of charity and compassion are woven into the fabric of faith communities across our nation and central to their mission. When government regulations such as the proposed amendment to the county's land development regulations now before the planning commission interfere with these lifesaving ministries, they do more than create red tape; they risk closing the doors of refuge on the very people most in need. That is why we write today, not only as a civil liberties organization committed to defending the constitutional rights of churches to minister to those in need, but also as fellow Virginians deeply concerned for the welfare of the most vulnerable in their communities. In the current form, the proposed amendment to the county's land development regulation risks jeopardizing the ability of churches to carry out this mission of offering shelter to those in cold, who have nowhere else to go. In short, the concern is threefold. First, that the proposed conditional use permit process would impose unnecessarily, unnecessary delays, costs, and procedural hurdles on churches already legally permitted to provide temporary shelter as part of their religious mission. Second, that such requirements risk violating both federal and Virginia constitutional protections, as well as statutory safeguards like R L U I P A and the Virginia Religious Freedom Restoration Act. And third, that by burdening or deterring these ministries, the county could deprive some of its most valuable residents of urgently needed refuge during dangerous weather while exposing itself to costly litigation. As explained in greater detail, there's no sound legal, moral, or practical basis for the county to expose taxpayers to the cost of defending a policy that burdens a church's constitutionally protected ministry. The simplest path forward is to make clear in Proposed Ordinance 86-44 that a religious assembly is already allowed to be used as a humanitarian shelter without a C U P. The county's C U P requirements fail to respect the rights of churches to minister to those in need. Under the proposed amendment to the county's land development regulations, property owners would be required to apply for and obtain a C U P in order to use the property as what the ordinance will define as humanitarian shelter, meaning a facility that provides temporary shelter and basic services to individuals or families without requiring leases or occupancy agreements. Moreover, the applicant for C U P would have to meet a list of several minimum standards and submit details about its operations as part of its application for consideration by the planning commission or board of supervisors to demonstrate responsible operations, maximize impacts on adjacent properties, and avoid undue burdens on county services. We understand that some churches in the county wish to temporarily house, shelter homeless individuals in their church buildings on a rotating basis at night during cold weather, though not continuously throughout the day, but are being told they need a C U P for this to avoid a zoning violation. There is a concern that some churches will be deterred by the process, and I emphasize this point, and not pursue a C U P or shelter the homeless, and that other churches will not be approved for a C U P in time for this winter. We appreciate the county wanting to provide process to support responsible shelter operations and minimize impacts on other property owners, but we are concerned that this C U P process and requirement does not respect the religious rights of churches and other religious bodies or organizations to follow their calling, to love their neighbors, and minister to the physical needs of others by offering their buildings to provide shelter to the homeless from the cold. Churches do not have to get government approval to exercise their rights." So this is not the entire letter. This is where I'm leaving off. So in closing, I want to, I want to plead with you, regardless of legal implications, please do the right thing and allow these churches, without interference and without making it difficult, to help these poor needy people without homes or heat in the coldest parts of the winter, as we have detailed churches will do. We have people lined up to do it, but they're not going to do it if they have to go through a C U P. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Surgeon. Next up is James Amick, followed by the Reverend Allen Smith.
My name is James Amick, and I'm here for Luisa District, and I'm here in part on Mechanicsville Baptist Church. The first thing I would like to say is, oh, I only get three minutes. I'm not, I'm just.
Thank you.
I would like to have five minutes, but anyway, I'll take what's granted to me. So I understand with this, the cup process, the county does not make any money, correct? The county, it actually costs money for you guys to publicize all of this stuff, if I understand it correctly. So you make no income off of this. So there should be no reason that the churches have to jump through hoops to file for the cup to represent what is right in our heart, that we're putting, God has mentioned in the Bible. It's one of the most mentioned things, over 2,000 times. Read them. Everywhere you look, God was among the poor people, the homeless, the people that were down on their luck. He wasn't sitting at the king's place and trying to represent himself. He was amongst the people, and as Christians, and we claim to be a Christian state and Christian this, as Christians, we need to follow what God is leading on our heart. And I don't feel that we should have to jump through hoops as a church, especially when there's no money to be governor to our county. We're not making any money. It's costing money. It is better for the neighbors around the church to know that the homeless person has a nice place to stay. They're not disturbing the neighbors, but the homeless going into the neighbor's barn and they call the law on them at 3:00 in the morning. Now the neighbors have lost all their sleep, and now the homeless that could have been in the church is now in Orange County for trespass or whatever. That is another cost to the state. We are not asking you all for any money. We will provide whatever is needed for these homeless people to get them back on their feet. Two, I mean, everybody talks about affordable housing. You've got Trelle Park in Minro. I can't afford $350,000, $380,000, and I'm pretty sure 90% of the folks behind me can't. So how's that make affordable housing for our folks in Luisa? Please, please reconsider and exempt the churches from doing God's work, and it's what is laid on our heart for these people.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Next up is Reverend Allen Smith, followed by the Reverend Laura Kaval.
My name is Allen Smith. I serve as pastor of Mechanicsville Baptist Church. I am not a resident of the county. I am here representing the church. I've been privileged to serve as the pastor of Mechanicsville Baptist Church since March of 2023, and I'd like to say for the record, I don't know that I've ever been more proud to be the pastor of that church than I have been tonight. So thank you for submitting. I know a lot of things have been shared. I certainly don't want to rehash or reiterate things that have already been shared, but I do want to pick up on a particular, another argument that we would have about the C U P and the conditional use permit process. One of the things that I take about as seriously as anything in my role as pastor is the privilege that I have to know many people and know them intimately, but I also carry the responsibility with that privilege of confidentiality. We talk a lot about clergy confidentiality, and I think any folks at my church would like to think and trust that if they share with me something going on with them or their lives, that it's not going to be shared with others. I bring this up because a concern that I have for churches being involved in this conditional use permit process is the issue of confidentiality. Obviously, as you know, anything related to a C U P is very public. It becomes not only in the paper, but public record that anyone can pick up and see who's applying. I have a friend in the community who has been helping someone in recent weeks, who is trying their best to leave situations of domestic violence. I cannot promise what the abusers would be doing, but certainly it has crossed our minds, well, what if we had this current, this proposed conditional use permit process? And people, if they had the wherewithal to consider this, or to look through county records and identify which churches might be offering to provide shelter, and potentially were even to go seek out those churches, the staff or congregations of those churches to see if people were there and put them in danger. Please understand, I understand this might be a very unique or rare case, but I do think there is something to be understood about churches wanting to care for the least of these, as you've heard so many people express this evening. And I do hope we are not putting churches or individuals who are vulnerable in jeopardy by requiring so much of this to be public. To shift gears slightly, I will fully disclose that I began last week an application for our church to be emergency shelter, the existing code. That was not meant to go around this process, as much as just understanding if there continues to be discussion or things like that. And I appreciate the conversations I've been able to have with folks on the staff, with other folks on the Board of Supervisors, with folks in the office, excuse me, it's helped me learn more about the process. And one thing I'd like to say here, for the record, not just about that process, but I think I can speak for all the churches, when I say, it is our hope and our desire and part of our mission to be good neighbors. And certainly, we don't want to do anything that makes our neighbors uncomfortable. That being said, it does seem there are ways we can find compromise, where there are churches working together, along with resources in the community that are helping individuals that are in need, and even local law enforcement, so that churches are able to provide a space for shelter, but at the same time, not in such a public way that people who might be trying to attack people who are seeking sanctuary or shelter have to find out about it. And there's lots of ways that police officers can know that there are churches in the area that can be used as shelter, but not have it be made public where everyone else knows about it. As has been said, it's come to my attention the past week even, that police officers, often encountering people who might be homeless and not having a lot of options for what to do with them, are actually spending their own money, not their budget, but their own money out of their own pocket to pay for hotel stays. So please hear me say, and I'd like to thank on behalf of any other church that wants to participate, that our goal would be to partner with law enforcement, partner with the Luisa Resource, County Resource Council and other organizations to work together, but to do that outside of a C U P process, where everything becomes so public that we might put others in danger. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Smith. Next up is Reverend Laura Kaval, followed by Pam Bickley.
I'm the Reverend Laura Kaval. I'm the former vicar at the Church of the Incarnation in Minro, but I come here tonight as the lead chaplain for the Luisa County Sheriff's Office. I have the privilege and opportunity to be able to support our deputies as well as our sheriff in that office. I do ride-alongs on a monthly basis. I also spend time in our high schools with our SROs. It is our school system that has identified the fact that we have a minimum of 100 and over 100 people, I like to use conservative numbers, I'm sure all of you can appreciate that, over 100 that are identified by our school system as being homeless in this county. Those statistics go to a federal survey, where we are part of a national number. I have the ability to also, as the lead chaplain, receive all of the phone calls, usually in the middle of the night, when deputies find someone that have no place to go, where either the Loyalty Inn is full, or it is inappropriate for people to stay there, or they have no money. And on this particular night, the deputy doesn't have the additional $80 to $100 to be able to pay out of their pocket, which they very often do, to allow them a place of safety, of warmth, of a bed. We don't pay our officers enough, as it is, to have them take whatever money they have in their pocket to cover the expenses of people who are in need, but they're willing to do it, and they have done it. I'm here tonight to ask you not to exempt churches, but to not even mention churches in your legislation. I don't want an exemption. I don't want you to discuss it. I don't want you to put it in your document. And I think that all of my colleagues have already spoken to the reasons why that would be appropriate. Most of the time when I get phone calls in the middle of the night, it's because of domestic violence. We have a homeless problem in our county, but the most of the telephone calls that we get are because of domestic violence. The manpower and the money that the sheriff's office spends on domestic violence is much greater than it even is of homelessness. My colleagues have mentioned the fact that there are, I, as a personal note, got a call in the middle of the night, Laura, we have a woman who needs a place to go. She's been in the woods. She's been abused. She's hurt, but she's not going to go to the hospital, and we only have three officers on duty. And we only have three officers on duty. We need somebody to come and help her. My mother had a spare room because at that point in time at two o'clock in the morning, it was the only person I knew to call. And your mom always shows up for you when God calls. She took that young woman in. We were hoping to be able to find temporary housing for her. It took over six months. My mother never asked a dime from the county. The people that are sitting here tonight have provided you with hundreds of thousands of dollars in not only time, but out of their own pocket to take care of people that are in need of this county. Mr. Coons has said that this is a fair process. I take exemption to his assessment. It is not a fair process. You are asking the people that are actually taking care of people in this county for extra time, extra talent, and the use of their resources when they could be actually doing important work rather than filling out paperwork, that then your staff has to spend their time and their talent and, and their wages that you pay them to go over it. On the night we were handed over, he was over, handed over to suffering and death, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ took bread. He took the bread. He blessed it. He broke it and he gave it to his disciples and he said, "Take, eat. This is my body, which is given for you. Do this in remembrance of me." Likewise, after supper, he took the cup of wine and after he had given thanks, he gave it to them and said, "Drink this, all of you. This is my blood of the new covenant, which is given for you and for many for the remission of sins." He held up a cup. The cup that he held up was sacred. The cup that you are asking us to consider as a responsibility is not sacred. It inhibits the work that God has called us to do. Do not demean Jesus Christ by asking us to take a Holy Grail and turn it into something that hurts people rather than helps them. I thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, Reverend Cavall. And my apologies for mispronouncing your name. Next up, Pam Bickley.
Hi, I'm Pam Bickley, and I'm with Aetna Better, Aetna Better Life of Virginia. I'm a Medicaid worker, working in the community, helping members with their medical needs or housing, domestic violence and everything. So tonight I'm here to talk about, just two days ago, I got a call that I had a family that was being released from the hospital and grandmother was very ill, the mom, and they were all homeless, living in a car here in Louisa. There are, they were Louisa residents, but they had gotten evicted because the grandmother had gotten sick and wasn't able to work for the last year. And they were behind on rent and they got evicted. And I had to work hard because I had, they had two children that have special needs and I had nine people. And also I, I worked very closely in my community in Charlottesville and surrounding counties, and I got together and I was able to get them a month free at a hotel in Charlottesville, efficient, like a big two-bedroom, uh, bedroom efficiency. So there is homelessness here. There's homeless in every part of the Western region, and I know, I work daily with homeless here in Louisa. And one thing I wanted to talk about tonight is the United States government has adopted a United documentary reference as the Universal Derfification of the Human Right, which which expects everybody from the government to recognize, serve, and protect a right to food, clothing, and housing in order to provide a minimum standard of living and dignity. Well, the United States government has also adopted a UN document reference as the Hippocratic Genoa, which suggests that local governments should impact effective strategies and plans to address the needs of unhoused individuals. Whether more than minimum wage is required in Louisa County to afford a one-bedroom apartment at, at market price, creating to working class that has no alternate than to live on the streets or in their car. Therefore, we believe that it is the best interest of unhoused in our community to have access to overnight shelter that meets basic standards set forth by our federal laws without having to receive a public approval by the government. And also that, um, working here, working in the, every day I'm throwing something, you know, it's, one day it's food and one day it's shelter. And, you know, we're looking for all this shelter. If we can just provide it, you know, during the winter time, very cold months, and if we look at the government and the laws that are changing with SNAP, that's food stamps and everything getting cut from people, we're going to have more homelessness all around the Western Union region. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bickley. So that completes all of the pre, uh, pre-registered folks that I have. So I'm going to open it up. If there's anyone else who would like to speak tonight, please come forward. Very well, and state your name and your voting district.
My name is Dana Russett. I live in the town of Louisa in Louisa Voting District. I just really need to say that I am inspired by my neighbors tonight. This is who Louisa is. This is the kind of people we want in Louisa, and this is how I was raised to be a member of our community. I've been a longtime volunteer firefighter and paramedic in, in the county, no longer serving, but like the, the community service that I have benefited by providing is such a gift to me and to my family. We have been able to raise our kids with a service-minded focus and everyone has the ability to give a person a bed. Everyone has ability to, to help a neighbor who's cold. Not everyone has the ability to help a person who's having an emergency. I wrote this, "Churches should be able to open their doors to people without homes. As a paramedic, I've served many people in crisis, including those living without shelter, and I've seen firsthand how a safe place can change everything. For churches, this is faith in action, opening the door when someone has nowhere else to go, offering a warm place to rest, and treating each person with dignity. Jesus said, 'I was a stranger and you invited me in, and whatever you did for the least of these, brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me.' I know this personally because we are providing a home for a young person who needed somewhere safe to live. I didn't need to ask my neighbors for permission to open my home to this person, and I don't think I should have to. Why should a church, also a home to its congregation, be required to apply for a conditional use permit to do the same? It's the same act of shelter, just in a different kind of home. Jesus didn't place conditions on compassion. He simply said, 'Love your neighbor as yourself.' For many churches, welcoming those without homes is not an extra activity. It's a part of living out that command. Just as I can open my own door to someone in need, a church should be free to open theirs. When we make space for the stranger, we live out the heart of the gospel and our whole community is stronger for it. Thank you."
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Very well, I'll also note that we received several emails, and these will also be placed in the public record of the meeting tonight. So with no one else wishing to speak, I'm going to close public comment period. Public comment period is closed, and bring this back to the commission for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goodwin.
Since you appointed me to take the lead on this issue, and it's generated a lot of interest, I would like to submit my final report, address some of the issues in the iterative proposed, the process of the proposed ordinance that staff and I have gone through since it first appeared on our agenda, and how we got to where we are tonight. If you will indulge me the time, I would like to read that report.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, from the beginning, this topic has been fraught with misunderstanding, misconception, and misinformation. Think listening to this report will be helpful to the commission as well as to the members of the public. Of the issues that I mentioned, I want to speak to four of those issues tonight. But before I begin, I want to give my sincere thanks to the citizens who have been so active in this issue. You have greatly influenced our thinking and the final product. The first issue was the original request itself. When it was presented, there were whispers outright positions from many corners of, quote, "No." I've got to admit that I was skeptical, but when you assigned it to me, I took on the position of how can we say yes? Second, the original ish request was generated by an outside party to modify the county's ordinance on emergency shelters. Early on, research informed us that that was not a viable approach. Emergency shelters are defined in the Code of Virginia and regulated by multiple state agencies led by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. They are established and managed in a, quote, "state of emergency" declared by the Governor of Virginia, or, quote, "a local emergency" as declared by local government. So we shifted to a definition of homeless shelter, which was actually the subject of the original request. This term eventually evolved into, quote, "humanitarian shelter" to include more opportunities to offer individuals basic humanitarian services such as food services, extreme weather relief, homelessness, to name a few. Third is a misunderstanding of the difference between an ordinance and a conditional use permit. This misunderstanding has led to the misconception and misinformation that this is a, quote, "county versus churches matter." Mr. Chairman, it is not. An ordinance is established to define land use countywide and equally based on zoning. An ordinance is not aimed at individuals or individual entities. It is not temporal. It applies on establishment for the foreseeable future and transfers with the land. A conditional use permit, on the other hand, is directed to an individual or an individual entity for a specific land use on a specific parcel or parcels, and it can be temporal. A conditional use permit allows the county to apply compliance conditions to ensure public safety and community coherence. Most recently, one of the interested parties in this issue offered that they would agree to the proposed conditions if they didn't have to attain a conditional use permit. That is essentially in a conditional use permit. But there's no way to get future parties to agree to these minimum terms without the conditional use permit requirement. Finally, there was the issue of constitutionality. Constitution, United States First Amendment ensures freedom of religion. There's been a lot of discussion on this and even the potential and threats of lawsuits. Some have suggested that we, quote, "carve out religious assemblies" in the proposed ordinance. Mr. Chairman, I'm certainly not an attorney, but I've given this a lot of consideration. Just as government cannot deter religious activities, it also cannot offer favoritism in the form of exemptions or other special treatment. This has been ruled in cases such as prayer in schools, the Ten Commandments in courtrooms, and religious displays on government property. With this in mind, I'm comfortable that the proposed ordinance treats religious assemblies equal to the treatment of any other applicant that desires to establish a humanitarian shelter now or in the future. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, citizens of Louisa County, I submit, to the best of our ability, we are offering the proper solution to the question at hand. It addresses the spectrum of human needs. It includes respect for public safety and community interest. It treats all citizens of Louisa equally, and most importantly, it finds a way to say yes. Again, I want to say a special thank you to staff for their expertise and support. And, Mr. Chairman, I intend to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Do we, do any other commissioners wish to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brooks.
We, I think I can say, oh, thankful for the churches and what y'all provide and do for the homeless. It's...
Mr. Brooks, could you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Can y'all hear me there? You hear me? I kind of got a feeling from some of the things were said, it was us against the church. It's, that's not the case. I believe all of us up here are thankful for what the churches do and all for. But it's what, in my mind, we're trying to do is strike a balance between the applicant and the neighbor. And I feel like this new ordinance that's being looked at provides that mechanism to do that, to treat everybody fairly. So I too, sir, will support the request.
Any other commissioners? Very well, with no other comments, then the chair would entertain a motion on this action. Before we, well, go ahead. The chairman would entertain a motion on this action.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goodwin.
I move that we approve the proposed ordinance and forward it to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation that they consider it favorably.
I understand we have a motion to forward this to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation to approve. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. In turn, does anyone have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goodwin.
I would like to also ask staff if they would please include a copy of the final report in with the package that goes to the Board of Supervisors, so that they will understand some of the issues we dealt with, and how we got to our vote, regardless of what it is tonight.
Very well. At a separate request to, for staff to include Mr. Goodwin's report as it's forwarded to the board. One, uh, two items I have, just as minor typographical errors, on page 26, in item C2, the, for some reason, and I, I'm going to blame Microsoft for these things, because of the way they come through, but the last word there, instead of client, should be clients plural with an apostrophe. And the second item is on page 27, section 3D. The last line of that, I believe the word assisting is incorrect and needs to be stricken. So the last part of that reads, "And client referral to demonstrate a supportive framework for clients." Those are my two typographical errors. Would, uh, do the motioner and seconder agree with those amended changes to the motion?
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
I agree.
Very well, we have agreement on that. Any further discussion? Ms. Johnson, roll call, please.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Pinky?
Yes.
Mr. Davisway?
Yes.
Mr. Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Cursey?
Yes.
Very good. The amendment to the Land Development Regulation is passed. Next item is new business. Do not believe at this time, we have any new, we have no new business at this time. Did anyone have any items for discussion tonight? Very well, no discussion items. Mr. Eh, or, Mr. Coon, did you have a report for us?
I did have, I guess, one new business, Linda Buckler, the Community Development Director. She did have an operation this week, but is back at the house, and everything's going good. It was scheduled, so this was, you know, known about, but if you guys are thinking about her, I'm sure she's set up at home, so I should, if she wouldn't mind a phone call and touching base with everybody.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, do, do you have any reports for us?
This time.
Very good. With no reports, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second? Moved and seconded, we are adjourned.